Are we ready? All right. Welcome, everyone, to the November 18th, 2021 Newport Beach Planning Commission. And we will start off here and have our pledge of allegiance. And Sarah will lead us into the further pledge.
If everyone could... We can give your card.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Kastemeyer. And then we'll move on to roll call.
All commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Secretary Elmore and Commissioner Kettin, who are excused this evening, and Commissioner Wagen, who will be arriving a little later.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on now to item number four on our agenda, which is for public comments. These are public comments invited to come up and speak to any item that is not on the current agenda for this evening. If you have any comments that's not specific to any item, now's your time to come up and speak to us.
Thank you, Chair Lowry and members of the commission. My name is Jim Mosher. I was hoping for a little more full panel. What I wanted to speak to you tonight about was to take a moment to remind you about the lobbyist registration program that our city instituted over a year ago. As you may or may not know, when somebody comes to you or speaks to you advocating for or against a project and being paid to do so, and they are neither the applicant, a regular employee of the applicant, or an architect defending their work, that person is a lobbyist. And in Newport Beach for the last year and more, they have been required to disclose that fact that they're being paid to lobby you, both to you and to the public, by filling out a form with the city clerk. At the moment, it's free and it's painless, but very few lobbyists are doing that. So I'm reminding you, because it's necessary for you to make the system work, to remind people who are speaking to you to ask, are they a lobbyist? Are they aware of this requirement? The obligation is not on you, it's upon them, but in theory, they can face fines and sanctions if they don't do this. And it would be also good for you to remind them when they do fill out that form disclosing their activity to the public, they find a little line that says, please disclose the nature of the legislative, quasi-judicial, or administrative action you are lobbying about. Many of them mistake that line. The answer, they think, is just to put down legislative or quasi-judicial. If they read the ordinance, that is not what it is. They're supposed to explain to the public what they're lobbying you folks about, a use permit for high school, a use permit for a wine tasting room, or whatever it is. So they need to be reminded of both those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up? See none. We'll go ahead and close the public comment section, and we'll move on to request, item five, agenda item five, requests for continuances. Any requests?
Chair Lowry, there are no requests for continuances.
All right. Move on to six, our consent items. We just have one item on consent of the minutes. Everyone had a chance to review and take a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
I'll second. All right. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to items number seven, which is our public hearing items. And we'll, under that, we'll move on to item number two, which is the Pacifica Christian School Use Permit, PA 2021-221. And we will have Chelsea. You're up.
Good evening, commissioners. Chelsea Crager with the Planning Division. This project is for Pacifica Christian High School. It is a conditional use permit at 883 West 15th Street and 1499 Monrovia Avenue. The project is an application to expand their school enrollment. Pacifica Christian does currently exist at 883 West 15th Street. They're requesting to expand student enrollment to a maximum of 305 students. This is up from their current maximum of 185, and also to increase the number of faculty and staff to coordinate with that to a maximum of 35, where their current maximum allowed is 18. Another part of their application is to utilize the 1499...
Pardon the interruption. I just, just for the record, Commissioner Wagen is now present.
Another part of their application is to use the building at 1499 Monrovia Avenue as classrooms. It's currently undergoing renovations and was previously, and still technically is an office building unless authorized for classroom use by this use permit. Also, a part of the application is off-site parking at Coastline College, which is adjacent to the 1499 Monrovia Avenue property. Our vicinity map to get us oriented, so here on the right in red, we have the 883 West 15th Street property. That's currently owned by the City of Newport Beach, actually, and there's a lease agreement in place for Pacifica Christian to utilize that property as their high school, and that is their current classroom location.
Chelsea, I hate to interrupt you, but we're just, are your monitors working? We can, oh, is it? It was on. What happened? All right. Sorry, just, we can look back, but it's nicer to have it closer here. Ah ha, on and off button. Okay, got it. Tech's not my thing, so.
It's okay. Technical difficulties.
I come late and I cause all these problems.
So as I mentioned, the one on the right, that's the 883 15th. That's where they're currently located, and that's a city-owned property, and they do have a lease agreement for authorization of that use. The left triangular-shaped property, that's 1499 Monrovia Avenue. They do currently have off-site parking authorized there, and the application includes a request to utilize that building as classroom use. I do want to point out that while it's not aligned in red, just right above here, this little rectangular piece, that is also going to be utilized as a part of the site. That piece, that parcel, is owned by the city, and there is a license agreement in place for utilization by the school. Also, I want to point out that over here, here's some Newport Crest residences, and I'll mention that later, some of the surrounding uses are largely residential. And right above here, there's Coastline College. Some background on the use. I mentioned that Pacifica Christian is already operating at 883 West 15th Street, and they have since authorization in 2014. In 2017, the school expanded, they increased enrollment, and started using 1499 Monrovia Avenue as off-site parking. In September of 2021, so just recently, the 1499 Monrovia property underwent a zone change from residential to private institutions, and that zone change allowed the school to apply for a use permit. Here's a site plan of the 1499 Monrovia property. So you'll see some of the parking is located here. I want to point out that those are all assigned parking spaces. You have some in-out over here. This is that city-owned property under license agreement that I mentioned. I also want to draw your attention over here to these trees that are shown on this landscape plan. So this is where the property is adjacent to Newport Crest Community, and they have agreed to put in some landscaping here to help buffer the use from that residential community there. I understand they've worked with that community extensively. I expect that the applicant's representative will go into that in more detail. Some details about the school operation. I mentioned 305 student maximum and 35 student, or excuse me, 35 faculty and staff maximum. Classroom use at both of those campuses. So the 15th Street campus would continue as classrooms, and 1499 Monrovia would be also used as classrooms. There's parking at both sites. There's 40 spaces at the existing campus. There's 62 spaces at 1499. And then Coastline College would be providing an additional 35 spaces. Coastline College, 35 spaces would be for faculty and staff. So the off-site parking that I mentioned is at Coastline College. So that's up here, and this green dash line kind of shows how close it is and the walking distance for faculty and staff who are parked here and then would be walking to the 1499 Monrovia campus. Passing periods. So it is a private school. They have a lot of control over their students' schedules, and they can schedule them to avoid back and forth between the campuses as much as possible, but there will still be some. There's classrooms at both locations. So they do have staff stationed around with these red dots. You'll see some security, some supervisors, some faculty and staff, and students would be walking here and crossing Monrovia Avenue here. Drop-off and pickup will continue at the West 15th Campus, as it always has. So this is right here off of 15th Street. It's a pretty easy loop. Off of Monrovia Avenue, this is going to be a new drop-off and pickup location, so at both locations. So vehicles would enter here, they'd pass through, drop-off, pickup, and exit over here. And I expect that the applicant's representative will go into that in a bit more detail as well. The project is exempt pursuant to Class 1 existing facilities, and the recommended action is that you find the project exempt and adopt a resolution approving the use permit. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and a representative are here, and I'm also available for questions.
Thank you, Chelsea. Is there any questions at this time for staff from the commission members? Looks like then, there. Okay. Go ahead now, and we'll see, let me just take a quick information on ex parte communications. So we'll start with Mark.
None.
I exchanged brief communication via email with the applicant's consultant. None.
I met with David O'Neill, the head of the school, but it was at the previous, for one of the previous items that was up a few months ago, but not for this item.
Yeah, I did the same thing, and I reached out to one of the consultants, and there was no issue, so I didn't have anything further.
All right. Thank you. So now we'll go ahead and open the public comments, and let's, if we'd like to start with applicant consultant for presentation.
Good evening, Chair Lowry, members of the commission. I'm Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, and I represent Pacifica Christian School in their application tonight. Thank you, Chelsea. I'd like to start by thanking staff for their very diligent efforts on this project, both Planning Division staff, Chelsea Crager, and also Public Works staff, Tony Bryan and his colleagues, who've reviewed our parking study in great detail. I think we were at nine revisions, and we really appreciate their thorough work, because I think we have a plan that will be very successful at the new campus. Chelsea's presentation was, in fact, very close to what I will be presenting, but I will be sure to go into some more detail. Here we go. So this is use permit application, UP 2021-037. This application follows the General Plan and Zoning Text Amendment that were a couple of months ago. So we see the Monrovia Campus in the red triangle, and the 15th Street Campus in the red rectangle. Above it, we have the Coastline Community College. And further north, we have Carden Hall, and I think those might be popping on here. There we go. So we have a couple of schools kind of lined up in this zone. The campus design has been really thoroughly thought out. The existing campus at 15th Street would serve electives, arts, and athletics, so some of the more particular classes. The campus at 1499 Monrovia is intended to serve all of the kind of main core curriculum classes, English, science, math. There are really extraordinary labs in the building. There is, I believe, 10 classrooms, excuse me, there are 12 classrooms at 1499. As Chelsea mentioned, the class schedules are going to be set up to minimize passing between the two sites, so that if, let's say, if a student has a class at 15th Street, maybe it's their first class of the day, they will be dropped off over there, so they won't be crossing first thing in the morning and then coming back. And the parking will also be designed so that parking is near where the student's first class of the day is. The extended passing periods, and I'll get into the passing exhibit in a minute, but extended passing periods have been designed to give more time for students and faculty to pass back and forth between the campuses when necessary. So that's a 10-minute passing period, so that people are not rushing across the street. They are very well-supervised, and I will show you in just a minute a little bit more detail. They will also be passing with faculty members, and faculty and security will also be posted about to monitor those passing periods. Okay. So here we have the Monrovia Campus. This is the newer facility. The, let's hope this works. Okay. So if you want to follow along with my laser pointer, cars will be coming southbound down Monrovia. They will enter the most southerly entrance here, and they will queue all the way up and in. And then we have, thank you, Chelsea, and then we have, this is our positioning. This is the front office, so this is where students would be intended to exit, the cars under supervision, and then the vehicles would proceed out and back onto 15th Street or Monrovia, whichever way they're going to go. But the intention here was to get the vehicles all the way down this street and then onto campus, where the longest queuing length is. Now, at drop-off and pickup times, this is a high school. This is not like a traditional, you know, elementary school or middle school if you're currently doing drop-off like I am. It's a very different situation. Many of these students do drive themselves. They do have assigned parking places on this campus, so they have, you know, if your parking space is number one, you always park at space number one. And so that minimizes the cars interacting through the parking lot and makes it much more efficient. But also, this long queuing length helps to keep the cars off of the public street. There are also split schedules, lower, or excuse me, later start times. Some students have study halls, so they don't arrive at campus all at the same time. And so we don't anticipate that there are going to be any off-site traffic impacts or queuing impacts associated with this new campus. The existing drop-off over here at 15th, Chelsea, maybe you can help me with your mouse, at 15th, here we go. So this will continue to be a drop-off as well for the students that have their first class at the 15th Street Campus. And again, so that is to minimize that first early morning. There won't be any crossing back and forth of the students. They will go to the campus where they start their day. And again, there's a, this would be a faculty or staff member at the entrance, making sure that the queue is proceeding at acceptable level. There's another campus supervisor station midway through the queue, and then faculty and staff assisting with students getting out of the car and cars leaving. And Chelsea also highlighted this for us. This is the walking path. There are 35 parking spaces to be utilized for staff members at Coastline College, which is directly across 15th. And then those faculty members will come through this green way and then into the building. So this is a nice orderly way. The reason that it's not students is because Coastline didn't want that liability. They wanted faculty and, you know, adults to be parking on their facility. And then we also have, let's see, we will switch gears here, and this is the passing period exhibit. So we have, you know, the, this is the front of the school, which is maybe a little confusing because Monrovia is the street, but the entrance to the school is facing Banning Ranch, if you will. Students will proceed up the green line to the crosswalk and cross only at this controlled location where there are supervisors, you know, posted here. And as I mentioned, faculty will also be crossing during passing periods with students. As was also mentioned, this 1499 location, the parking lot is currently being used as off-site parking, for overflow parking. And so students are already traversing through the streets and across the crosswalk. This is an existing condition, but now they will have classes here, and there will probably be fewer students crossing back and forth. I'm not aware of any issues that the city has been made aware of related to concerns about students crossing. I think that the school does a very good job of monitoring kids, loud voices, trash, you know, the regular things that happen with schools. Okay. And then our neighbor outreach. So we do have the Newport Crest Community on this side. Here we go. And then we also have additional homeowners here. The school has done extensive outreach, both in the lead-up to the General Plan and Zone Change Amendment process and through this. There have been two rounds of individual personally-delivered letters that have gone out to about 75 folks each time, and then we've had, I believe, two in-person meetings with the homeowners association representatives. We have Ginny Lombardi here tonight. She's the vice president of the homeowners association, and we have worked with them on the issues that they presented before the general plan amendment. Those issues were really related to screening, noise, and insecurity. And so, as Chelsea has mentioned, we have a row of ficuses that will be planted as a buffer, and they will extend about 20 feet north of the last residence on the campus. The campus is pretty constrained in terms of available area for landscaping, but they were able to stretch that to give a bit more buffer here. There is a trash enclosure where we cannot put ficus trees, and the homeowners association has agreed that we can plant them on their property in order to maintain a nice visual buffer. We will be working together to establish the height of the ficus hedge. That has not yet been determined, but we've asked the association for their input related to that. This corner in particular is of concern. This is, there's a retaining wall here, but when you stand on the Newport Crest side, it's a very low retaining wall. It's about four and a half feet. I watched David jump over it, and so we know that it's an issue. On the school side, it's about six feet. This is an existing wall. It's quite old, and again, it's retaining earth. We've come up with a preliminary plan to try to build a little shield wall here for this corner unit that is most impacted by the noise and lights that will be associated with the project. But again, we've had several in-person meetings. We've gone through the lighting plans, the operational plans, and I think that we feel very confident that we've addressed all of the concerns that they've raised. Okay. And here's a summary of what I just said, so I'll skip over. All right. We are here to answer any questions that you have. David O'Neill, the head of school, is here, along with many students who are here to support their school. We request the approval of the use permit tonight, and again, available for any questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And just one question. You've had a chance to review all of the conditions and...
I apologize. Yes. We have reviewed the staff report. We agree with the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant's consultant? Commissioner Kleiman?
Thank you. Thank you, Shawna, for the thorough presentation and for all the outreach that you did with the neighbors upfront. We always like to see that and appreciate that. I just have a few brief questions first about busing. I noticed that it was referenced in a couple of places in the staff report, but it was a little curious to me.
Yeah, busing is not a component of the project, given the size of the school.
Right. But I did notice that it was referenced in one or even two places.
I know that there is often transportation provided related to athletic events. Buses, probably the issue is buses. So during athletic events, I will come back here. During athletic events, which will be held again at the existing 15th Street Campus, where they are, for those activities that occur on campus, which I think are basketball, volleyball within the gym, others are held at off-site locations. For schools that might have a bus to bring their students, most come in vans because of the size, but if they have a bus, there is bus parking right here, and you can see it's in blue, it says bus parking. This would be intended for those visiting athletic events or other visiting student events. This is not a regular component, but we wanted bus parking here. We have a condition which says no idling, so that if a bus does arrive on campus, it would just pull in here, and that's where it would park, and it would not be near the residences that are on the other side. And that's why it was purposely designed up by Coastline College.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then just kind of breaking up the different groups that are expected and how they're arriving. I know it's just a very lengthy report, as you mentioned, but just trying to get a handle on how many students are arriving via some sort of carpool or being dropped off, how many arriving by bicycle, and how many are expected to actually be driving themselves and parking on campus.
Yes. And I might ask David to come up and help me with those questions. I know that we had submitted the bell schedule, and we had previously quantified the number of students that are anticipated most times. Unfortunately, I don't seem to have it with me tonight, and I don't want to misspeak. So David, if you can just walk us through carpools, number of students driving, let's start there.
Yeah. First, thank you. Appreciate all your work. Interesting fact about this school, most of our, many of our students have siblings. So first, you have probably 30 to 35% of the student body has a sibling, and so you have a natural carpool built in through that requirement or that experience. And then I would say the vast majority of our students come in carpools in the morning. So drop-off starts first period, let's say that's around 8, 8 to 8:20. Prior to that, we also have a zero period. Somebody has an AP class, part of the student government, other things, they might show up at 7:30. So you have a group of students that show up at 7:30. Next group shows up at 8:00. Most of them are carpool and/or siblings, so anybody who has a parking permit, we get about 60 permits this year. I think 40% of those bring a sibling with them. We only allow for one parking permit per family, so we won't give you two parking permits, even if you have a sibling. So we require that they come as a family. Then we have late start, so a number of students that might have a parking permit or get dropped off, frankly, might not start until 9 o'clock or around 8:50, and that's a significant number of our population. So in the morning, you have quite a few different ways, the timings that a student might show up, and really thin that out. In the afternoon, we have very high participation rates in all of our co-curriculars. We have an 85% participation rate in athletics, over 60% in the arts or extracurriculars. So for example, our volleyball program, just on the girls alone, had 50 girls in that program. Our girls and boys basketball programs, which we're moving into right now, have about 70 students in those two, so they're not leaving after school. And we have anywhere between probably 50 to 150 students who are involved in athletics or after-school experiences, so that also breaks up that sort of potential congestion at that 2:50 to 3:00 mark for pickup and dismissal. And then, so you might have, we probably have a similar sort of morning and afternoon experience with drop-off and pickup with how those students all get spread out. Did that address your concerns?
Yes, thank you.
Mark, you have some questions?
Again, a quick question about the parking, and I have two teenagers, so they both have cars. Well, actually, one of them is not a teenager, I take that back. There's 102 student parking spaces, so with 102 spaces, how will those be allocated?
Yeah, so I'll start, and then I'll ask David to add some color to that. With 305 students, you have roughly half of those that would be upperclassmen and eligible for parking permits, and then because of the familial ties, you have a reduction there. And anything else?
I mean, that's the gist of it. We only give parking permits to upperclassmen, and when they're, so right now, we've been able to meet the vast majority, all of our demand up to this point. With the increase of parking, we'll be able to continue to meet that demand, but then we don't give them out to underclassmen, right? So if you're a sophomore and you get your driver's license for a semester or second semester, unfortunately, it's just known that you don't drive to school until upperclassmen. So that's typically how it's been enforced. Up till this point, though, we've actually been able to meet sophomore demand because we had availability, but we stopped, we stopped that practice this year in anticipation of the need for this reality. But yeah, parking is always that thing that we're trying to manage, so we manage it through policy.
Any other questions?
I just had one question. If this is approved and attendance is increased up to 305, is that going to be implemented next year in terms of the max, or does that kind of phased in in terms of up in the students' attendance?
Yeah, it's a gradual phase in, as, you know, there are a lot of applications. You know, I think private schools, especially with COVID, have become incredibly popular. I know that this one in particular is in high demand because it's in Newport, and people want to go to school in their community. But yeah, it's going to be over the next couple of years, I think, two to three years. Is that, yeah?
Great. That's my only question. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now's the time we'll ask from the audience if anybody would like to come up and make some, have any comments to the specific item.
Chair Lowry, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. In looking at the staff report and the attachments, I noticed the previous use permit, or current one, that this is superseding, is sometimes referred to as 2017-8, sometimes 2017-6, and sometimes 2017-66. The dash eight seems to be correct, and that seems to be the way that it's referred to throughout the resolution, so I don't think any correction is needed there. I did notice that the conditions of approval, you have three use permits on your agenda tonight. This one continues to use a template for the conditions of, standard conditions of approval that is a carryover from the same template that was used in 2017 and has been used until recently, while the other two are using a new one, so I'm wanting to confirm that that is intentional. While the other two are using a new one, so I'm wanting to confirm that that is intentional and not inadvertent. The old template begins with condition one being that the development will be in substantial conformance with the approved site plan stamped and dated with the date of approval. And my only comment about that is I could be mistaken about this, but I seem to recall a couple of months ago, when the general plan amendment was before you, there was some correspondence saying that the construction of this project was already going on and creating a noise problem at that time. So it just seems a little bit presumptuous to have constructed the project before the use of it has been approved. And as to the conditions that are in here, I was a little confused. I have not read all of them. I was a little confused by number 25 and number 26. Number 25 prohibits the use of an outside paging system. And then number 26 says that the outside paging system has to comply with our noise standards. So I'm a little confused. If it's prohibited, why we're saying it has to comply with the noise standards? So I don't know if that is inadvertent or intentional. And that's all I've read of this, so thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
I'm Ginny Lombardi, vice president of the homeowners association next door. We're going to be neighbors to the school. And I want to emphasize that the way our mitigation conversations have gone on has been correctly reflected in what each person has said. It seems to be an ambitious project, but we are working on working out some of the details of mitigation. And with David and his team, it's, I think we're doing a real good job working together and making sure that this will come together. So, thank you.
Great to hear. Thank you. Any other further comments from the public? Okay.
Good evening. First of all, thank you to all of you for your service to our city. My name's Mary Callahan. I am the student body president and a senior at Pacifica. And I can testify firsthand to the great work Pacifica is doing, not just in educating students, but in producing leaders and contributors to our society and more specifically, our Newport Beach community. I've been involved in this project for the past few years in brainstorming and planning for it. And I have confidence that it will continue Pacifica's mission well. So on behalf of my peers, I'd like to express my support and excitement for this project.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Will Carlson. I'm a junior at Pacifica. And like Mary, I would like to thank you all for the service you do for the community. And I would also like to come and support for Pacifica. I also was involved with some of the process of this building. And I think my favorite part of how we've done it is the community outreach. I went with Mr. O'Neil one time and we hand-delivered notes to all of our neighbors that he had written and signed himself. And we knocked on each door and asked for questions and concerns with the community. And so I think that this school is doing a great job of making sure we are able to both give our student body a good education, but not at a great cost to our neighbors. So I'd like to move in support of this project.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments? Looks like there are none, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion. And then we'll bring it up here to the dice if there's any questions of staff or comments amongst the commissioners. Let's, looks like Commissioner Rosin.
So I thought about this and how to word this. The only way I can come up with it is, does this parking extrapolate towards a similar, like a, the similar parking that you would see at any other school? In terms of numbers? I mean, is there a way to do that? Or it works in, I was just trying to understand from a mathematics perspective how you could even come up with a.
Sure. I think this is a very unique parking management plan based upon the ability of the school to, you know, assign the parking spaces and control the parking management in this way for these two particular sites and their location. I'm not sure it's necessarily transferable to another site, but you know, a similar parking management plan could be done for a different school that might have similar results. And they've worked very diligently with our traffic engineering folks to make sure this kind of works as best we can. Because we were concerned about the cross-traffic between the sites. And, you know, we want to make sure this was very efficient to minimize the issues for the community. And we feel this parking management plan achieves that goal.
Okay. Thanks. Any other further questions or comments? Lauren?
I found the busing remark. It's number 40 of the conditions of approval. Looks like we have a couple of just minor discrepancies in our conditions of approval. Also, I wanted to ask or address the buffer and retaining wall. That's not currently in the conditions. Is that something we're going to leave to the applicant to work out with the neighbors or something we're going to try to work into the conditions?
It is not currently in the conditions of approval. It is within your purview to add it if you see fit. But right now, we did not include it in the draft conditions of approval, no.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need to address number 40? Strike that or?
It looks like that may have been a holdover from a previous approval. So it could be stricken if you'd like.
And 25 and 26 reconciled in some way?
Yeah, 26 would be a strikeout of that sentence that refers to that, that one sentence that refers to the paging system.
Sure.
Commissioner Rosin? You have a question?
I guess the question is, is there or is there not a paging system?
I think the applicant might want to answer that question if we can open the public hearing and do that.
Chair Lowry, is it okay if I answer this question? Thank you. So it's my understanding that the code requires that there be a paging system for fire life safety. It is not utilized. And we have gone over that in great detail with the neighbors. There are no morning announcements that get broadcast. There are no, there's no use of that. But it's my understanding it's a requirement for the building code.
I don't use bells either.
Yes. And no bells either. Thank you.
Yolanda, since, do I, should I also ask for additional comments? Since, is that, I guess qualified opening up a public hearing when she came and spoke? Or are we, now that she answered the question or?
Yes, Chair Lowry, if the question has been answered, you can go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay, I'll disclose it, yeah.
If there are any additional questions, I can.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and close it. Close it again. All right. Any further questions? Sarah?
Chair Lowry, if I may, the question on condition number 40 about busing, that was a holdover condition from the prior use permit when they had a different parking management plan when this school first started. So we would actually want to strike condition number 40 as well.
Strike 40, okay.
They are not providing any busing services to the campus for the students.
Okay.
That was a, again, a holdover from the original use permit that was done several years ago.
And my only commentary is that going through, I mean, all the findings that staff did seemed right on and specifics to the side. I, you know, I think the biggest question here was really the parking and how that, and the drop-off and how that was going to be managed. And after reviewing the parking management plan and knowing that our staff, our traffic engineer, Tony, reviewed it and approved it, then I'm satisfied. So I would like to move to approve item, agenda item number two. The three recommendations within the agenda.
Could I second that with just an addition of asking that they either come back to this body or even the zoning administrator in, you know, whatever the appropriate period of time is? I just feel like whenever we do these complicated parking management plans and having dealt with a number of dicey carpool situations, especially one at a school that's currently under construction at the moment, there's always things, as much thought and effort has obviously gone into this, things that have not been totally worked out. And it's just a good check-in to come back. And obviously, when it involves the safety of our youth, it's just we want to be super diligent. And if the planning commission is open to that.
I'd ask staff how that would be together. I mean, I could see that maybe like a summary or, you know, as, my question is that the attendance will be staged so that, you know, you'll see increase in people and parking and whatnot and activities. So, you know, how that, my question is how we would, you know, request that? Is it more of a summary of status of the parking management plan being implemented?
Yeah, I guess that's a question for staff. What's the best way to kind of apply a check-in point?
So commissioners, there's a variety of things that are part of this parking management plan. In fact, there's some provisions in there that Tony can go over that kind of, if it's not working, there's some adaptation techniques in there that would actually address those concerns. But I think to your point, you know, is this something that the commission wants to see at some future date automatically? We obviously monitor these projects and when there are issues, we send out code enforcement. We do observations. And if there is an issue that warrants, you know, review by the planning commission, at that point in time, things are really having a problem and we would be recommending some changes. And we would work with the applicant in advance of that. I'd like to think that, you know, staff can do the monitoring for you, but obviously, it's up to the commission. And if you want to add a condition, that it comes back to you for a report. We can do that if that's the pleasure of the commission.
If it's unnecessary, then that's fine. I too support the project. I'm glad to see it back. I'm definitely happy to see the school expanding. As Shawna mentioned, it's in high demand and everyone that I've spoken to who attends is very happy there. I just want to be, as I said, really diligent about our students' safety there and with the crossing and bicycles and young drivers. But I do have confidence in staff's ability to appropriately monitor. So I will keep my second and exempt my previous statement and just include the strikeouts that were previously mentioned.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that the original motion included the changes to the condition we spoke about, eliminating condition 40 and removing the second sentence of condition 26.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Those strikeouts, yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I'll say one post-item, closing item. If I could have spoke as well as they at that, as they did at my age, at their age, I would have gone further in life, so.
What are you saying about yourself?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that's just very impressive. I'm very impressed. All right. We'll go ahead and go on to agenda item number three, which is, I'll get all the specifics here in our agenda really quick. Item number three, which is the Wild Taco Restaurant PA 2021-106. And Jocelyn, I believe you'll be leading this one for us.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. My name is Jocelyn Perez, assistant planner with the planning division. And the project in front of you tonight is a minor use permit to allow the upgrading of an alcohol license at an existing restaurant and modifying their hours of operation. The existing restaurant is known as a Wild Taco. It's on the Balboa Peninsula, right off of Newport Boulevard. The Wild Taco Restaurant has been operating there for over 10 years now. It originated as a catering business and back then was known as a Bear Flag Fish Company. In 2009, they obtained their first use permit to operate as a restaurant. And in 2011, they modified their use permit to add beer and wine. And most recently, they have rebranded as Wild Taco and they focus on being a family-friendly taqueria experience. The project site is zoned mixed-use cannery village. The surrounding land uses include that same mixed-use designation as well as some commercial along Newport Boulevard and across Newport Boulevard. We have the Lido House Hotel to the north of the project site. And the nearest standalone residential zoning district is across Newport Boulevard. One notable thing about the mixed-use zoning district is in those buildings, we tend to have commercial uses with residential units right there. So that is something that was analyzed in this request and conditions of approval were incorporated into the project to help mitigate any concerns from the request to the residents nearby. The applicant's request is to upgrade their ABC license from a type 41, which is the on-sale beer and wine, to a type 47, which allows for beer, wine, and spirits, and to increase their permitted hours of operation to 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. daily. It's notable to point out that 10 p.m. is not considered a late hour and this project does not include any increase in capacity, no additional seating. There's no changes to the floor plan and nothing that is anticipate, nothing that would change the parking demand of the restaurant. The project has been reviewed by multiple departments, including the police department and our code enforcement division. And both departments expressed no objections to the proposed project and they offered additional, they offered conditions of approval such as no live entertainment or dancing, having food sold or available until the closing hour, no late-night happy hours. And that was recommended in order to keep this as a restaurant rather than to allow it to morph into something else such as a bar, which is a different land use. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan, the coastal land use plan and our zoning code. Staff's recommending to conduct a public hearing. And I'm available to answer any questions. We also have staff from the police department available as well as an applicant, a representative of the applicant. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions here for staff as we start off?
I just had one quick question about the occupancy. I see they have 15 tables inside and six outside. What's the total max occupancy? Do you know?
That is the maximum allowed, tables and chairs. I do not know the specific occupancy that is set by the building division.
Maybe when an applicant comes up, they can address that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Eric, any questions? Okay. We'll start with ex parte communication. We'll start down there with Mark.
None?
None.
None.
None for me.
I spoke with the owner of the property and discussed the merits of the project.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and we'll start with the applicant.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Rawlings. I'm a consultant to Thos Carson, who is the owner of Wild Taco as well as Bear Flag. Just for the record, we do agree to all the conditions of approval as they are presented to you this evening. We concur with the staff's report. The request is relatively simple. You know, Thos has been operating in that location since 2009, I believe, and has been selling alcohol or beer and wine there consistently throughout that time. And there hasn't been any, any issues with his operation, his restaurants, anything that's related to alcohol service there. And his, you know, the request is simply to be able to, you know, serve distilled spirits so that he can serve a regular margarita as opposed to a wine margarita like many of the other establishments do. The second part of the request is that we just be allowed to be able to go till no later than 10 o'clock. Almost every night that the business is open, they close much earlier than that, but we would just like the ability to be able to stay open that late. But, you know, oftentimes, we, the business closes at 8 p.m. You know, with that said, I am going to ask Thos to come up and I think he's going to, you know, tell you a little bit more about his story. I was here before you folks with his other restaurant called Circle Hook a few weeks ago. And as you all probably remember, this is a family-owned operation, Thos and Erica, who are born and raised here in Newport Beach. They currently, in their restaurants, they have seven of them now, currently employ 250 people. And most of those people are probably local to this, the Newport Beach area. And they do quite a bit of sales in there, so they're contributing substantially to the sales tax in the community and employing a good number of people. So with that, I'll let Thos take over.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Carson and my wife Erica and my two daughters, Chloe My name's Thomas Carson and my wife Erica and my two daughters, Chloe and Charlisse, are here. And I wanted to start by thanking the Planning Commission for hearing us tonight and also the support from the local community for tonight and for the last fourteen years. We're here to talk about Wild Taco and Wild Taco, four oh seven thirty-first Street, was kind of our first location that we ever opened. I was twenty-seven years old, working at the fish counter at Bristol Farms, and I had a dream to open a restaurant, and I saw this mechanic garage, I'm passing around this, and it came up for lease. And anyway, it was kind of right during 2007, 2008, when the recession was kind of hitting, and so luckily, it came up for lease. And anyway, my wife and I pulled together basically all the money we had. We took a loan on our house and built out the first restaurant there, and we've been there ever since. And really, we put in our dues, I think, in the neighborhood. Everybody knows us, we're a big part of the community. We grew up here in Newport, both went to Newport Harbor. My wife went to Newport Elementary. I went to Carden Hall. My kids go to Carden Hall now. And anyway, with our business right now, just, you know, with the pandemic and everything going on, it's been really tough. The first year that we had with with PPP money and help from the government a little bit, and that really helped us out, you know, but none of the inflation was happening during the time. So really, I mean, everything's up, ten percent on poultry, meat, fish, everything, labor's up. So this year is going to be a real tough year, I think, for all the restaurant businesses. And really, what we're trying to do is we're trying to step up our food, and with doing that, we wanted to kind of step up our drinks as well. And it's hard serving margaritas with like a wine sake and making margaritas without. What we're trying to do is make craft cocktails, you know, very small, not like a bar at all. We did the same thing for Bear Flag when we moved over to Lido, and we saw a substantial jump in sales, and we still kept our same operation. We close at nine o'clock, eight o'clock on Sundays. Our operation had not changed at all. Our sales helped increase. The margins on alcohol really helped, and I just think that honestly, it would really help complement our food and it would really help upscale our concept, and that's kind of our goal.
Any questions for applicant here? Done. Looks like none on this side. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and then open it up to anyone else in the audience that would like to to make any comments specific to this item.
Chair Lowery, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I didn't hear it in the report here, but I do think it was in the staff report. I mentioned that this is a minor use permit. It normally would be a zoning administrator item, but it was referred directly to you and I, there's no explanation of why. I would assume it has something to do with adding more alcohol use to an area that already has a high concentration of that. And while the Police Department does not object to the project, they do note, and in your decision, you are supposed to, these are not findings you have to make, but you have considerations, and they're about the amount of crime and alcohol-related crime that is in the district where the application is. I assume that that was the reason it was referred to you. As to the conditions of approval, as I noted in the previous item, this seems to be using a new template that I have not seen before, starting on handwritten page twenty-four. For reasons unknown to me, it omits what has always in the past been the first condition of approval, requiring substantial compliance with the approved plans for the project. And it's a little confusing that's left out because when you get down to condition of approval five, it says it has to come back to you if there's any modification from the approved plans. So I'm wondering why we're not clearly defining what the plan is, or if it's being carried over from the previous use permit, I'm not sure. We see a very sketchy plan here on the last two pages. Unlike any other restaurant plan I've seen, it doesn't actually show how the the fifteen seats inside or the six seats outside would be arranged. So it's a little different than usual, and I don't know if this is the approved plan or sufficient, or any more thought has to be given to that. And in the new template, I also noticed there seems to be at least one typo. If you look at condition of approval number six, it says future alterations to the restaurant will be evaluated for compliance with city standards and respective codes, and if a building permit is required, will be something during the plan check process. There's some word missing there. Will be obtained during the plan check process. I'm not sure what the new template is supposed to say. And then on the next page, under, this is a minor point, but condition of approval twelve in the third line down refers to the barrier around the outside area and refers to as a raining slash fencing thing. I believe that's supposed to be railing slash fencing. And then condition of approval seventeen refers to a structure on the roof. I may not have read the report carefully enough, but I'm not sure what that's referring to. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments in the audience? Okay.
Hi, I'm Mike Flynn. I live ten feet, or I measured it twenty feet from Wild Taco. I'm from Newport Beach. I've been here sixty years. This is the first time I've ever been to a city council meeting because I really didn't think it's that important in the past, but now I do. And I have nothing against the family and the people that built a great restaurant and 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 it's good for the community and the community has paid him back and he's very successful. That's wonderful. But the two things are, and I've read all these letters and about seven of them obviously commented very clearly and almost exactly one point, that being open till ten o'clock will not disturb the neighbors, and I'm here to say that it will. Because even though, as you guys know, right now they close at nine o'clock, we hear cleanup noise last night and the night before and the night before, it's right around ten fifteen, right? So we hear the bottles, everything going in the trash. We're right across. Is there any way that we can get that map up? Because I heard that they said that there's no residents except for across Newport Boulevard. Is this a pointer? Okay, can we zoom in? So this is a parking lot. This is the AA, the Newport Club, AA meeting group that meets until about eight o'clock. Right there is my balcony, and that's Wild Taco. This is all residential upstairs. All these are residential upstairs. All these are residential here, right here, I know the people. So there are a lot of residents around there, right? And there are a lot of places. So what I'm saying is, is if you allow them to go to ten o'clock, I'm going to be hearing that stuff until at least eleven o'clock, and the people that hang out, they just, once they close, you know, you guys know the drill. It's much later than when they close. And so that's one thing. I I do not want to be, to go to sleep at twelve o'clock. I might because of the noise. That's not, that's not fair. I think that we all deserve a little bit of peace and quiet, especially after ten thirty, whatever, and I deserve that. The other thing is about the alcohol license, I have nothing against alcohol at all, but as it says in all these letters and as it says in his mission statement or what he's conveyed is, is he's developing a family restaurant, right? And it's taco, there's a few tables, and that's what it is. It's a great restaurant. It's a family. And just like this gentleman over here, we don't need another bar. We don't need something like that. We don't need loud anything and then disturbing these wonderful families that go and go to this bar. There's enough places around, as you guys know, that that can be conducted.
Any other comments?
My name is Rand Johnson and I'm a resident of Lido Isle, but I also own a residential condo two doors away from Mr. Flynn's condo, and it's at four two four thirty-second Street, Unit A. This unit is directly behind the Wild Taco. Just as Mike said, I have nothing against the owners of the Wild Taco or or anything else. I think it's a nice place. However, I'm against approving extending their hours and extending it to a full liquor license. I've read their support package, and it's a good support package, but this is a classic case of not in my backyard. If you start reading their package, they say they have two hundred and thirty-one people supporting it. Well, if you read it, these people are from Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, Cypress, Garden Grove. There's only about, there's only about five or eight percent of these people that actually live in Newport Beach, and the closest person, one person lives two blocks away. The other closest person lives ten blocks away. They're not affected by the noise. They're not affected by the shared alley that we have when their patrons leave at night. And I've been there at night, and I've and I've heard them leave, and it's not, it's not a nice sound. I've heard the trash going in the trash can and the bottles going in there. It's it's not good. Also, when you take a look at the the first eleven signatures on their petition, this is from student housing at Vanguard University, and I'm going to assume these are just a bunch of college students that came down there for a bunch of tacos and beers, which people do in Newport Beach, but I don't want people getting drunk on margaritas and hanging around and singing and anything else. This is a residential area, believe it or not. This property is sighted by three sets of residential properties across the street, directly behind it, and off to the side. Also, if you take a look at their letters of support, they're almost zeroxed, is is somebody wrote them up for them. As I said before, the the restaurant presently closes. They want to now extend it, and just like Mr. Flynn said, they want to extend it to ten o'clock. That sounds really nice, but it ruins our peaceful enjoyment because what happens after eleven o'clock, excuse me, after ten o'clock, they don't clean up until eleven. And I noticed this for the last week. They don't dump their trash until at least an hour, hour and a half afterwards. Now, if this starts going on any later, this might go into midnight and could possibly go into the next day. So what happened is, I don't want to have this in my backyard. Now mind, I don't, I I also own businesses. I own several businesses, and I am too an entrepreneur, and I understand when entrepreneurs need to make money and work, but not in my backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Nikki Martin. I'm a Newport Beach resident, born and raised here. My purpose for being here is to support the expansion of the time and the alcohol permit because just as all of us live around the corner, I live on Balboa Island and around the corner from businesses, and noise is a problem sometimes for all reasons. And where we live, it's because of the community of the peninsula, it's because of other bars going out late, it's not because of a restaurant that's family. I have a son, we go there quite frequently, and I would like to be able to enjoy a craft cocktail, not just a beer, because I don't drink beer. So I'm wanting to say I'm in support of it and would like to have that be a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jane Flynn and I'm Mike Flynn's wife. I also grew up in Newport Beach, born in Hogue Hospital, also went to Carden Hall, a little bit older than you are. So I've lived here my whole life, and I also really enjoy Wild Taco. I frequent it. I come across the alley, pick up my food, take it home. The noise is an issue at this point. My husband and I bought the unit in January, February of this year with the understanding of Wild Taco closing at nine and serving beer and wine and remaining a family neighborhood restaurant. So to purchase a three million dollar condo earlier this year with that understanding and to now, you know, possibly be in a situation where this is turning into a full alcohol situation that would, once the hours extended, which we already hear trash and bottles and people till ten thirty at night, every night, in its current situation, which we have dealt with, the extra hour would be an absolute, it would take away our quiet enjoyment as a resident living there. And I also run businesses. I own commercial real estate throughout Costa Mesa, Southridge County, Huntington Beach. Many of my properties have restaurants. Many of them are denied full alcohol licenses because they are close to residential units. One of my projects in Huntington Beach is right across the street from residential, and they have not been granted a full alcohol license for this reason. So please take this into consideration. If your bedroom door was twenty feet from a restaurant, you would understand what I'm saying. So thank you very much.
Could you just state the, I think you stated the address again, I think they wanted to, that?
It's four two four thirty-second Street, and we're in Unit C.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Beldon. I was born and raised here in Newport, and for the last five and a half years, I've owned a small business at four oh eight thirty-first Street, which is directly across the street. And I have to say, I spend most of my day looking straight out across at Wild Taco, so I see everything that goes on there. And it is a very well-run restaurant, family-oriented, and like they said, they do often close before I even go home. If it's slow, they're closing up, and I have never seen issues. In five and a half years, not once have I seen any kind of issues coming out of that restaurant. And in fact, I have to say, some of the managers, when we have problems with Newport Club or homeless, managers are out there diffusing those before the cops even get there. So when it comes to turning this into some sort of party scene, that just isn't true. I don't think that's going to happen. And I just want to say I fully support, as a resident and business owner across the street, I'm fully in support of passing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Will Anderson, thirty-seven-year resident Newport Beach. Wanted to say I fully support this as well. On the note of it being a family establishment, my mom and dad live in the area, as do my older brother and younger sisters. They all frequent Wild Taco. My dad goes there every Monday with some friends of his from growing up here and going to Corona del Mar. It's a family establishment. It's just going to further support the local community and a good family restaurant. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Garcia, also born at Hogue Hospital, so a local Newport person. I run operations for Thos and Erica. I'm a person that has decades of experience in the hospitality industry and can work for a lot of different companies that are out there. I choose to work for Thos and Erica because of the family culture that they have developed, the interaction with the local community. And basically, my experience is operations, nightclub operations, restaurant operations. I have heard some of the the concerns that the locals have, the local residents have, noise from bottles. Some of those concerns can be easily rectified by the way we run our operations, sorting bottles, dumping trash earlier, things like that. We can be very considerate to We can be very considerate to the concerns that they have and kind of work around that. Also, my experience is in training, alcohol training, food training. I'll assure you that the staff, management, hourly bartenders are aware of the alcohol service concerns that we might have, so they're trained properly. I live in Huntington Beach, I'm 12 minutes away from the restaurant. I also guarantee that if there's any issues at the restaurant and there's a need for rapid response from a representative of our company, I could be on that property in 15 minutes. I appreciate you considering the expansion of the liquor license, and that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michael Brandon. I'm a local restaurant consultant, resident, born and raised in Newport Beach here. I live about half a mile from Wild Taco. My three children and I frequent it regularly. We've been involved and associated with them since their opening. And it is, you know, it's a community place. It's a kind of a cultural vortex for us who live in Newport Beach. You know, we have our Sunday brunch, we have our micheladas, we have, we order tacos to go. You know, my, my 23-year-old daughter just celebrated her birthday there. And, you know, it's just a very much a part of our community. It's a, it's a, it's a community-based, you know, institution. And, you know, we, we embrace it, we support it, we love it. And, you know, it is a meeting place and it's a sort of a, just a community hangout. So, you know, we want to support them in any way we can. Obviously, we all would love a really great margarita, you know, we really would. And, and, you know, in this day and age, you know, with, with how these restaurants are struggling, it's nice for them, nice to see them be able to prosper a little bit and enjoy, you know, the upside of that, you know, that margin. So I would hope that, you know, especially with everything else that goes on the peninsula, with all the sort of craziness and the bars and the things that happen, that, that you all would see, you know, and appreciate the fact that this is a family institution, something that is not a bar. You know, it's not a bar, it is a restaurant that would love to be able to offer spirits. So, you know, we hope you take it under consideration. I am in full support of it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Nick, I'm the general manager of Wild Taco. I want to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us, all of us. I want to say I've been there for almost seven years now, running it, I mean, just running it. And as to the noise complaints of the bottles and stuff, we do recycle. And I've always built a good relationship with every single one of the neighbors around Wild Taco, to where I handle things personally. If there's any problem or issue, I've been more than ample to rectify any situation. So to hear that there is noise with bottles and stuff, it's the first I've heard of it. But yeah, no, I've built relationships with everybody around there. Because we are a family-owned restaurant, family-run, we do support all the families that come in. We're kid-friendly. And as far as it, us getting our full liquor license to serve spirits to everybody, it would be best for the entire community and the city. And I think that, especially with, you know, we have malarkeys across the street, I, I don't tolerate any riffraff. So I just want to say, I hope you guys take everything into consideration on our behalf to help us, you know, get this license through. So that's it. But thank you again.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right. Doesn't look like we have any more comments, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and have to bring it up here to the commissioners, if any questions...
I don't know, I'm sorry if I may, if we wanted to just maybe ask the applicant if they wanted to do any rebuttals.
Yeah, good point, yeah. If the applicant would like to come up, and we'll open the public hearing again, and just if applicant would like to have any rebuttals to the comments, we'll...
Hey, good evening. Steve Rollings again. I just was, you know, talking to Toss a little bit, and he was not, we weren't aware of some of the noise issues that the other neighbors have just brought up this evening there. And I've worked in a situation similar to this in another community. And one of the conditions, and I'll offer this up for your, your consideration, is that maybe we can put in a condition that there won't be any trash dumping after, say, 10:30 in the evening. And that way, you have at least a concrete, you know, condition to put a lid on, you know, the trash. And I understand that that can be kind of loud, and Toss is going to try to do his sorting and recycling indoors to minimize the types of noise that there. And also, you know, for the record, you know, Toss has always given his, you know, personal cellphone out to any of the neighbors, and I'm sure he'll be happy to do so with the, with these neighbors, that if there are any issues, you know, he lives 10 minutes from there, and he's, you know, more than happy to, you know, drive down and take care of any situations that might occur, or if there's ongoing problems, you know, go deal with it. He's certainly not looking to be a nuisance to anybody at all. He's, you know, existed there for a lot of years without any real major complaints. And we certainly would like to take some steps, such as, you know, not, not dumping our trash past 10:30 to hopefully, you know, mitigate some of the concerns. You want to say anything?
Yeah, and then also, I'd like to add to that. The city, and I think it was like maybe three or four years ago, came up with a recycling program, and this was something new that we never did before. And they brought us bins that we actually, they wanted us to sort our trash. So we've followed the guidelines that the city's brought us, and that's maybe what the noise is coming from. And really, you know, I've had issues with the delivery driver running his truck in the back. And it was a neighbor that I know very well, and, you know, she brought it to my attention. And we fixed it the next day, the delivery driver would park in the front when he would do his deliveries and not leave his car running. And so what we try to do is solve problems and communicate with our neighbors around there, and that usually makes everybody happy. And, you know, I have not met the new residents. I'm not sure if they even unpacked their boxes yet before they were complaining to us. And really, you know, I'm glad that we're here kind of settling this in front of you guys, so then that way, hopefully, we can come up with some sort of an agreement where that, you know, we can meet in the middle on some of this stuff. And, and, you know, now that we know that the bottles are a major problem, we will definitely take that into consideration and try to fix it immediately.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments there before, additional from the public before we close? Oh, like not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing once more, and we'll bring it up here. Any questions for staff, comments, discussion amongst the commissioners?
Yeah, I'm supportive of this. I went to high school at Toss and Erica and a couple other speakers, and these are community-focused people. They, they care about our city, they care about making their business work. This is a model that helps their business. With COVID and some of the changes that have occurred with our, a lot of our businesses in the community, we, you have to restructure, and some of this requires some changes. And this model of bringing full alcohol allows them to maximize a little bit more profit, help them stay in business and, and function. They, they have several businesses throughout our community, Bear Flag and Circle Hook. We just recently discussed Circle Hook, and I, I brought up changing their hours and increasing their, their time that they were in operation. I, I don't see that necessary for this location. I think what he's bringing forth is a reasonable request. It's beneficial to their business, so I'm, I'm fully supportive, and I, I'll push forward with the, the motion to approve as, as recommended. Mr. Campbell has a potential question.
Certainly. I, we did take a look at the, listen to the comments from Mr. Mosher. There's a few typos, we need to go ahead and fix those. I think condition number six, we can strike. I think that was an incomplete thought, but all future, all alterations to a facade that require a building permit get evaluated by the building division, it does not need to be said. So we just simply strike condition number six, and we'll correct the railings condition as well. And that's it.
All right. For me, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve that.
I think he's going to be a good operator for our city and willing to work with the neighbors. I think that there's obviously some concerns, but I think Toss has put forth a passion to help rectify any potential noises that will occur. And I think he'll be a great operator for our city. PD doesn't seem a problem with it. I think this is a, a simple request, and I think that it'll help his business, and I think he'll be a, a good addition to our city. So I'm...
I'll, I'll echo my colleague's comments there. Again, outside of, it seems like he's definitely open to rectify any issues that may be in disturbance of the neighbors. But one of the things, as reading through all the information for the police, there was really no calls to the business for any issues over the last few years, and no, at least complaints that were brought up here are really just no, no situations that would, would look unfavorable to the business to be, to be able to step up, if you will, for, for an alcohol license to, or more alcohol privileges to, to serve. So I'm in favor, and I will second.
Chair Lowry?
Yes.
If I may, you know, Mr. Mosher did bring up another point, you know, we didn't change our template for our conditions. We did have a missing condition, our standard condition, which is usually number one, about substantial conformance to the plans. We would include our standard condition there and replace it with condition six, if you will. So if that would be... Grillo?
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you. A few seconds as we... Okay, we'll move on to item number four in the public hearing section here. This is Orange Coast Winery Use Permit PA 2020-082. And we have Chelsea again. All right, two tonight.
Back. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Chelsea Craigor again with the Planning Division. This application is the use permit for Orange Coast Winery located at 869 through 873, so three tenant spaces, West 16th Street. As a vicinity map to get you oriented, so the subject property building is in red here, and a little bit of a zoomed-in view of it, so you can see there's a large pool of parking here. The parking is actually shared across over here as well. And we'll talk about it more in a little bit, but right now, trash storage, the dumpsters for this development are kind of stacked back here. You can see these little rectangles here, those are the, the current dumpsters. Some background on this application. In 2010, Orange Coast Winery was approved at 816, 869 West 16th Street for wine production, retail, and limited tasting. It's located in the industrial zoning district. And at that time, the wine production was approved and allowed for that limited tasting. Over time, the project or the business evolved, and the wine production was no longer taking place on site, and it became more of a wine tasting room only. As I'm sure you are familiar, the Planning Commission has seen some action on this before, because in February of 2021, there was an ordinance that also went through the Planning Commission that allowed wine tasting rooms in the industrial zoning district. Some of the requirements of that ordinance included separation from schools 500 feet, separation from other wine tasting rooms, also 500 feet. And to jog your memory a little bit on that, here are some slides that you've probably seen before. So separation from schools, here's Carden Hall in a 500-foot separation. Orange Coast Winery's location does comply with this 500-foot separation. And additionally, this is a 500-foot radius drawn around the location of Orange Coast Winery, the proposed wine, Orange Coast Winery. There are no other wine tasting rooms that are located within this 500-foot radius. So the project is consistent with those two separation requirements from that ordinance. Some details of the project, it is a wine tasting room, which means it has a type II ABC license, which is for wine growers. Parking is required pursuant to that previously mentioned ordinance at a space of, or at a rate of one space per four occupants, and with a maximum occupancy of 99 people. That's 25 parking spaces that are provided on site. There's a mix of tenants there, and so if you look at each, each tenant and what their parking requirement is and compare that to the larger pool, they do have those 25 spaces available to them. Their proposed hours of operation are 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and noon to 9:00 p.m. on weekends. So a site plan, as I mentioned, it is in that industrial area, so you see a lot of those industrial suites. And on the bottom left is where you'll see the Orange Coast Winery location and that large pool of parking out there as well. A floor plan, so these are two of the suites, 869 and 871. The blue area is the public area, the actual wine tasting area. You also have a yellow area, which is a kitchen, which is not a full restaurant kitchen. There's nothing that needs exhaust or cooking. It's for some minor food prep, things like charcuterie boards. Obviously, they're doing wine tasting, so dishwashing, things like that. We also have offices in purple and that small lobby up there in orange, and a lot of storage space. I mentioned that the use is three suites, and I don't have the third floor plan displayed because it's just all storage. This is more exciting to look at. Some of the conditions of approval that are included, especially because this involves the service of alcohol, are those hours of operation previously mentioned. I also mentioned that there's no kitchen with exhaust, so it's not a restaurant, it's a wine tasting room. There's no live entertainment or dancing. There is a training program required for all employees that are serving alcohol, and also security recording required. I mentioned that I would talk a little bit about trash enclosures, and that's why I have this picture up here. We have a condition of approval number 13 in your draft resolution. It's a standard condition, you'll see it in a lot of the, the projects for restaurants, bars, food service. In this case, the applicant is seeking relief from this trash enclosure condition of approval. The applicant currently has a dumpster similar to other uses in the vicinity, does have a locking lid, which complies with water quality requirements. The enclosure is more for aesthetic purposes. So I wanted to draw that to your attention, so you're aware that the applicant is seeking relief from that condition of approval number 13. The, the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which is existing facilities. Recommended action is to conduct the public hearing, find the project exempt, and to approve the use permit. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here as well as his representative, and I'm also available for questions.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any questions for staff before we open the public comments?
Chair, Chair Lowry? If I may, just to kind of augment, I was looking over the conditions based on Mr. Mosher's previous comments, and I noticed the same issue with the conditions that we had with the prior application, where we were missing that substantial conformance condition. So we would want to add that condition. You've seen that many times in the past, but it's our standard condition. And then condition number six is the same grammatical issue as the application before, and so I think we would just want to strike that up, that condition.
All right.
If I may, I did have one other item, I just wanted to augment with respect to the condition number 13. I didn't have a chance, or we didn't have a chance to speak to Chelsea prior to coming here, but that condition is broader than just requiring a trash enclosure, so I'm sure the applicant will be able to speak in greater detail to that. But it, it's not necessarily an enclosure that's required, it just requires, one option would be screening from view. So I wanted to just color the discussion as we go into that with that, with that additional piece of information. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, any questions? It looks like there are none, so we'll go ahead and see Ex parte communications. We'll start with Mark.
None.
None. None.
None.
I reached out to the applicant's consultant just to ask a few questions, but nothing major.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and open the public comments, and we will hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Continuing with the theme of the night, I'd like to thank Chelsea and the staff for their wonderful work in making this happen and putting this together. This has been a long process for us, and we think we're at the end of it now. I'm going to introduce Peter, who is the owner, and he's going to talk a little bit about what the operation is over there.
Good evening. My name is Peter Swanson. Thank you for having us here today. I actually have family watching from Maine to North Carolina to Arizona. So, because we didn't get a big posse today. My wife and I bought Orange Coast Winery last year. We closed on it April 10th, three weeks after California shut down for, for COVID, so we're all about bad timing. We are the third owner of it. We made a deal to buy it in 2019 from the previous owner. And since the summer of 2019, I've been working with Jim, who I... I've been working with Jim, who I didn't even recognize tonight, and some, and the rest of the planning staff to make sure everything is up to speed, including the zoning and the permits. So thank you to them. Thank you to Chelsea, arguably the hardest-working person in Newport Beach. I thank them as well. We are also a family-run business, but being just a wine bar, we are not a family business. 21 and older is required. We, in a way, are a family business because many of our staff members are family to each other. We have a woman who's our longest-tenured wine guide, and her son worked there. One of our other wine guides has brought in two of his daughters to work with us, so very, very tight-knit community, very close with our customers and so forth. I think that's all I want to get to. We have our architect here today, Timothy Rhodes. He can answer questions. I can answer questions, and Phil can answer questions as well. So thank you again.
Just while you're up, just see if there's anyone on the commission that has any questions for the applicant. Seeing none, thank you.
All right.
All right. Any other public audience comments? Mr. Mosher?
Thank you, Chair Lowry. I thank the staff for correcting the template, and I apologize for not pointing that out to them earlier, but I didn't actually read these until this afternoon. And as you know, you have to get comments in by 5:00 the day before, so too late to do it other than here. Maybe you understand it. I don't personally understand what we're hearing about condition 13 and how that is somehow waiving the normal trash enclosure requirements. Not self-evident from it. And the only other comment I would make about that is in the zoning. As you probably know, and as the previous applicant pointed out, there have been changes in trash collection rules that went into effect for commercial businesses last year and for residences coming up next year, such that where they used to, well, long ago needed only one container. He was speaking, they needed two, one for trash, one for recycling. Now, in the last year, they need three, one for trash, one for recycling, one for organics. And our zoning code sets minimum square foot area that is needed for trash, and we may have to rethink that since they need more latitude for more containers and possibly more different pickups there. I don't know. And the only other comment about this is condition number 36 on handwritten page 23 from the Building Division. Occupancy separation between S, B, and A occupancies shall be provided by fire barriers. You may understand that. Maybe the applicant understands. I have no idea what S, B, and A occupancies are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Staff had any comments to any of the questions, or at least in terms of the fire, actually. That was an interesting question in terms of S and all those numbers, letters.
It is a condition of approval from our Building Division, so as a part of the project review, it gets routed to Building Engineers and the Fire Department, so that would be a building code requirement for the construction of the tenant improvement.
Got it. Thank you. All right. All right, so we'll bring it back up here. Any questions, additional questions for staff? Any comments?
The risk of being called draconian, I'm going to start off here. First of all, condition number 23 says 11:00 p.m. I think that's supposed to say nine, if it's consistent with the rest of the report.
So the condition of approval that limits the hours of operation to 9:00 p.m. is through the Planning Division, and it's number seven. That further limits the hours of operation to those that were mentioned. The Police Department conditions of approval reflect what their memorandum includes, which is that if the project had gone to 11:00 p.m., they would have still continued to have no issue. You can strike that if you'd like, but the planning condition is really what restricts the hours of operation.
Okay, same point on number 28 that says beverage promotions after 9:00 p.m., but seems inconsistent. I'm still struggling with this. So there's no food, not only is there no food required to be served, but there's no ability to make food because they can't have a kitchen, right?
It's not allowed to operate as a full restaurant. The type-two license allows for the wine tasting room, which does not allow for a restaurant. That would be a different type of ABC license. You are correct.
Okay, yeah. Can you shed a little more light on the type-two license? It's for growers, but it doesn't require that you're serving on-site in the same facility where you're also.
The what type-two license is a duplicate license, so they can have, a specific winery can have a duplicate license for a wine tasting room. And at that wine tasting room, they can only serve wine. They cannot serve liquor. They cannot serve beer. They cannot operate as a restaurant. It's tied to a winery. Though the wine production is not happening on-site, it's a duplicate where it allows them to have a wine tasting room separate from where their production takes place.
So again, there's no requirement to serve food, so it's just alcohol sales, and their occupancy is 99 people?
That's correct.
It's about twice the size of the space of the previous applicant, but it's quite a bit more in terms of occupancy. I'm just, it just feels very much like a bar. And I'm just struggling in an area where it seems completely out of place. And I know we keep referring to it as ancillary to the surrounding uses. However, it's in complete contradiction because the hours are totally different than the industrial uses around it. I'm just, just can't quite get my head around this one, not dissimilarly to the last time we discussed it up here.
Other questions for staff? Comments? Discussion amongst the commissioners? Eric, anything?
I think that the, oh, Mr. Campbell.
Oh, Chair Lowry, if I may, I think we would want to eliminate condition number 28. That would be applicable if the hours of operation were extended past 9:00 p.m. up to 11:00 o'clock. We can also strike condition number 23 as well because we do have condition number seven, which addresses the hours of operation closing at 9:00 p.m.
Okay.
And that's it?
Twenty-three and twenty-eight.
Oh, one more point, if I may. You know, when we're looking at condition number 13, this is our standard condition. You know, it obviously deals with the screening of the trash, and so if a dumpster is out of sight, if you will, behind the building and out of public view, that would actually comply with this condition. I think we want to leave this condition in because if there is a trash enclosure coming, if it's necessary, like if we need additional space for those organics and other things. And if the trash is not being maintained properly, that's when code enforcement can step in, and through this condition, we can require them to build a trash enclosure with the necessary screening and what have you. So we'd like to keep this condition in, but we can be flexible with it at the staff level.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, how many times have we seen a kind of similar variant of this item before us on the commission? Obviously, it's a conditional use permit, so it's a little different, but as far as the zoning discussion we had on this particular item, you know, it went to us, and then it went to the council and bounced back to us, and we've talked about it several times. We talked about breweries and distilleries and wineries and, you know, in this particular area of the city, and we've had a host of discussions related to some kind of similar topics in this particular area.
Well, indeed, we have. I think we started with an ordinance amendment to allow breweries in this particular area. That kind of morphed to include distilleries and wineries, if you will. You know, it did bounce back and forth between the council and the Planning Commission. There's a little difference of opinion. In the end, the City Council did authorize the wine tasting rooms in the industrial zone under very limited circumstances, those buffers to other uses that we showed you earlier. You know, so the legislation was, is in place for the ability to obtain a conditional use permit, so it's consistent with the zoning. And so tonight is that use permit. You know, do we have the operational characteristics? Do we have the conditions? Do we have all of that correct to address any potential nuisances the neighborhood might experience? I think with the recommendations that we have here, you know, the Police Department's review and the hours of operation, and when you look through all these conditions here, it really does not allow them to operate as a bar. It is a wine tasting room for the purpose of selling out, you know, selling wine, and it does not allow a bar. You know, you've got condition number 25. They cannot operate a bar here. And so this is a wine tasting room, and it has to comply with the conditions of that alcohol license, so there's also another agency involved in regulating this use, and that is the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. You know, we do feel that this operation, you know, given its surroundings, we don't have residential uses nearby, and I think it warrants a recommendation from the staff for approval based on these conditions. Ultimately, it's up to the commission to decide if it's appropriate for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. That's informative, and I think that this is totally justified in this particular area of town, and we've really worked hard on this particular item. Yeah, we've bounced it around a few times, and there's different variations of it, and the City Council saw it, and we've seen it. I think it's given its due diligence, and like you said, it's an area of town, there's not any residential, and it's kind of a perfect spot for this, and I would be supportive of seeing other types of businesses doing that. I know that we put zoning in there to kind of prevent an excessive amount, but these guys are here, they've been in this community for a while, and I think that there's nothing to say that this would be detrimental whatsoever, so I'm ready to support and make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving that the CUP, the conditional use permit, allowing them to operate in the fashion that we presented tonight with those minor modifications that you had recommended and staff had recommended.
I'll second. Excuse me.
The motion carries 4-1 with Vice Chair claiming voiding no.
Third time's a charm, as you were saying. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to Section 8 here of the agenda, which is going to be staff and commissioner items, and so we'll move to item number five, which is motions for reconsideration. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to item number six, report by the Community Development Director or request for matters which a Planning Commissioner member would like placed on a future agenda item.
Chair Lowry and Commissioners, I just want to do a brief report. We had a couple of items with the City Council earlier in the week. We had a study session on the housing element, and I'm bringing this up just so that, to mind you, to let you know that that will be coming back to the, coming to the Planning Commission on December 9th, and that'll be your next meeting. That draft housing element was submitted to HCD this week, and we'll get additional comments back in January, but that process is moving forward, and the next step in this process will be coming to you on December 9th. We also had a study session on fractional ownership. That was an interesting discussion. This is fractional ownership of single-family homes, and so that was a very interesting discussion. At the end of the, that discussion, the City Council didn't provide any direction to make any changes to staff. We don't view those as time shares, and so they would otherwise be allowed. So we had two public hearings, one on the Newport Place Plan and Community Amendment. That was where that restaurant site was going to a general commercial site. The council did take that on and voted to approve it. The other one was the call for review of the 76 station, so that project went, and the City Council did approve that project Tuesday night. So at the, as I mentioned, you know, we've got our next meeting. We have two items on that agenda. One is the housing element, and the second is a small restaurant in Lidl Marina Village that'll come before you here as well. So that's, mark your calendars for Thursday, December 9th. The only other two items I wanted to let everyone know about is, you know, the Uptown Newport Plan and Community has continued to move forward. We just issued permits for kind of the second construction phase, 30 condos, because they're called Park House, and they're right there behind that public park that's in the middle of Uptown Newport, so that is under construction. We're working with another developer on the last remaining piece of Phase One, but that's coming a little bit later. And the other item I wanted to note is, you know, that Harbor Point Community Residential Care Facility up on the Kitty Yama Restaurant Site up near the 73 Freeway near Bristol. That project actually was submitted for plan check very recently, so we're reviewing, you know, a set of drawings this big for that project, so it's moving forward. So that's all I have here for you this evening, and thank you.
The 76 station was approved, but with more limited hours than what the commission approved here, correct?
If I remember correctly, they did adjust one condition about the sale of alcohol. There was a condition about that. They curtailed it in the morning a little bit, and that condition had some flexibility to allow the Community Development Director to allow it to be sold later in the evening after a year of monitoring, and they removed that condition. So I believe the condition now says 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., so that was the one change, I think, that they made.
Yeah, and was a departure from what was approved here. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to item number seven, request for excuse absences. I tried to move a work item for December 9th, and I'm going to need to be, after trying, I'm going to still need to be in Colorado, so I will not be here on December 9th, so. So I don't know if anyone else has any items. None? Okay. We'll go ahead and move for adjournment. All right, 8:15, 16. All right.